Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we'll be starting the meeting in a few minutes and we'll be going live. So I'd ask everybody, including councillors, if they could just finish their conversations. Okay, can you tell us when we're live? Okay, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the local area... I just want to welcome everybody to the East Local Area Committee meeting. So, good evening, everybody. The meeting is open to the public and a warm welcome to everybody who's turned up tonight to attend. My name's councillor Mary Lee and I'm chair of the Local Area Committee. Before I ask other councillors and officers to introduce themselves, I'd like to hand over to Democratic Services to do the housekeeping arrangements.
Thank you, Chair. Before we start, there are just a few housekeeping arrangements to mention. Please, can I request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? There's no fire test plan for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the council staff present. The assembly point is in the far part on that side of the building. The toilet facilities are situated back round into the foyer and on the left-hand side. The meeting today is open to the public and will be livestreamed for a subsequent broadcast via the council's website. You should be aware that the council is a data controller under the Data Protection Act. Data collected during this webcast will be retained in accordance with the council's published policy. By entering the meeting room, you are consented to be filmed and to the possible use of those images and sound recordings for webcasting. One final thing to mention, we have hearing loops available. If you'd like to use one, please let us know. Thank you.
Thank you, Philippa. Could I ask members and officers around the table to introduce themselves? And I'll start with Nabila at the end.
I'm councillor Nabila Malana. I'm the councillor for Park in Alberthorn and I'm the deputy chair of the Local Area Committee for the East.
Councillor Terry Fox, Manor Castle lad.
Let me show us Terry's face.
Hello, my name's Sam Hurst. I'm a member for Richmond Ward.
I'll point this microphone at you, David.
Thank you. I'm trying to make you make a noise. I'm David Barker, another councillor for Richmond Ward, passing it down.
Councillors are here and now's councillor for the Darnall Ward.
I'm Laura Moynihan. I'm councillor for Manor Castle Ward.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Hooda Ahmed. I'm the local area committee manager for the East Slack.
Hi, I'm Philippa Bedet from Democratic Services.
Okay, so before we proceed with the agenda tonight, I'd just like to explain how the meeting's going to work. We'll first deal with some formal business, that's apologies, a minute of the last meeting. We'll then move on to the items of the Local Area Committee budget report. The area manager will give a report, will give a presentation, and there will be an opportunity to ask questions. And members of the committee will be asked to approve the recommendations of the report. The area manager will then go through the East Slack end-of-year report, that's 23 to 24. And when that item is finished, we'll have an update on our parks for the service, which is Ruth's, that's over there. And then we'll have an interactive session. So we'll go into that room at the back into groups and I'm sure Ruth will ask us to either have some questions for us or ask us to do some work. And that's what we'll do. And we'll come back and have some feedback from what people have said in that interactive session. And finally, we'll go to public questions, public questions and answers, and that will be at the end of the meeting. So the first item on the agenda is apologies for absence. Philippa?
We have apologies from councillor Seanhead, Mayor Richard, and councillor Sophie Wilson.
Are there any items that require the exclusion of the public and press? No. Any declarations of interest from members? No. Minutes of the previous meeting then.
We've also got apologies from councillor Ben Miskel.
Can I include councillor Mazurik Bolan now as well? Minutes of the previous meeting, can I ask members to approve as a threat record the minutes of the last meeting that was held on the 7th of December? Approved. Item six is the East Slack budget update report. So I'm going to hand over to Hooda, local area committee manager, to give that report.
Thanks, Chair. So this report has already been sent to the elected members in the four wards and I'm assuming you've read it all because it kind of gives you an update of what we've spent the £100,000 on and what we spent the £38,550 for the cost of living budget. We're going to go through the whole of the report, but I want to draw your attention to page two of the report. Under the recommendations, the three bullet points, it talks about on appendix one, a breakdown of the budgets that we've allocated from the £100,000. You remember, the £100,000 was allocated to us to spend on the East Slack plan priorities. And if you remember, in previous reports, we can only authorise funds of £5,000 and less. So on bullet point two, it's asking you to approve the expenditure that was paid to Woodtop Tenants and Residents Association of £5,001 because it's up by one pound. And the other one is asking you to approve the allocated budget of £15,680 to the link, that's for a community adviser. And then in bullet point three, I'm just asking you to agree and note, like I said, the expenditure of the cost of living budget, which is the total amount of £38,550, all explained in appendix two. That's basically it, unless anybody else has got any questions?
Questions from members? No, okay, so we approve that budget? Yes? The next item again is a presentation by Hooda on the year-end report of the Slack.
So normally, what I do with these sort of things, every year, I stand up and I do a PowerPoint presentation and I explain how much money we spent on projects, what we've done, and some of the outcomes and so on. And some of the feedback is okay, but sometimes it can be a bit dry. So what we tried to do this time is play a video this year. And the video that we've done this year, it gives an overview of the local area committees, the East Local Area Committees. It doesn't capture everything that we've done in the work that we've done so far. It's been three years since the area committees were launched. But just to say that this year, some of the significant events that we've had this year is we had, if you remember, the Manor Bonfire, which one of my colleagues worked on to raise funds. We raised about £20,000 to help support the Manor Bonfire and we attracted about 60,000 residents. And we also support the Darnall Lantern Parade. It didn't happen this last year, but we are supporting it. There's annual events that happen now that we've supported our elected members to carry on with, like the Tree of Hope event at Richmond. There's Alberthorn, there's now a really well-run, well-attended Alberthorn Luncheon Club and Bingo that serves some of the elderly residents. We've got Saturday Clubs now that's happened. Some of the funding that we've had from the £100K and the cost of living and the other third stream of funding, the Ward Pots, we've funded something like over 100 organisations that provide activities, support communities and families in the community, and they are helping us to implement our priorities. So I'm not going to say any more, I'm going to go and sit down, but I'm going to just watch the film that we've created. And then if you want to ask me any questions, ask me, I don't have to ask questions. All right.
My name is councillor Mary Lee, I represent Darnall Ward and I'm the chair of the East Local Area Committee. We're in our third year, the Local Area Committee started three years ago, and there are seven across the city. I chair the East Slack, which comprises Alberthorn, Manor Castle, Darnall and Richmond Wards. The aims of the Local Area Committee when we were set up was to engage and empower and enable local communities. And when we first started, we worked with the local community to set priorities for our area. They came up with six priorities overall, mainly to do with children and young people, environment, health and wellbeing, transport and highways, antisocial behaviour. Those were the main priorities people told us they felt were issues in their local area and wanted to tackle. To achieve the priorities, we've worked with local services in the council, other local organisations, particularly the voluntary community sector, to try and enable and deal with issues that people have brought to us. We engage with local people in a number of ways. One is through formal public meetings where we can make decisions, formal decisions. It's a formal council meeting, decisions are made. But we've also engaged people on road shows, we've had Days of Action where we've knocked on doors, listened to local people when an issue has been brought up.
My name is Halima Mohamed and I work for the African Women's Health Group. I am the chair and the founder of the African Women's Health Group and we have been running more than 30 years now. So we have lots of women now in the centre. We have around 100 and something women who are learning English and other activities. The East Area Local Committee, they helped us pay for our homework club that we run on Sundays because we used to be funded by different funders for a very long time. But it came to an end last March, so the area committee helped us fund for this year. And we are very grateful for that funding because if we didn't get that funding, we would not be able to run that homework club.
In terms of funding, local people set the priorities. The funding we have had, and we've had a fair amount of funding over the last three years, we looked at setting up Saturday Clubs for children, young people, particularly when the cost of living issue came. We thought that if we set up Saturday Clubs where people, young people could go and not just do an activity, but also have a breakfast as well or a lunch. And that's been very successful. We've done projects on with local people in our Days of Action. We've developed a belief that we've paid for and funded, that we have distributed to local people, telling them how to recycle, how to get rid of the waste, that kind of thing. So those are some of the examples of how we spent our money. We're well established now, people know about the local area committees. But we're looking, what's the next step? How do we develop as we go further on?
I think that's about it really in terms of my report, Chair, unless anybody else wants to ask us any questions.
Okay, obviously we can ask, people in the audience want to ask any questions, that's fine as well, but I just want to look to the committee to make any comments about the organisations or activities that were funded in each of their wards. It's now an opportunity to say what they think has worked well for the funding that we've done now. Yeah, Laura?
I think Terry would agree with me that the Ward Pots has allowed us to fund small groups that otherwise wouldn't be able to run activities. And it adds so much more value than, you know, a group might ask for £1,500, but the community building and activity, the benefits that produces far outweigh the sums. As local government has been squeezed for resources, this is the only way that we can sometimes get money to local groups. And it's been so valuable with the cost of living to keep people warm, give them something to do, and bluntly to feed kids, which any activities that we do that have food on offer are always highly valued. And that's a sad state on our society. But I think, as you know, we can see from the banners around the room of food banks and life on the breadline, it's the only way that sometimes we can make a difference at the very grassroots-like community. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. I'd just like to say it's one of the people who kind of drove to get the likes, up and running and how the passion, if you want, is to how we affect the places where we live, where we work, where we play, and how we get that kind of input into those communities and to give them a chance. And we took a big leap at that time. When we were getting squeezed on all sides, we took £700,000 out of the budget to give to local area committees to engage and to enable and empower. I know they're three words, but they're massive words when you really whittle them down. A number of people over here tonight will be members of groups and friends groups, et cetera. And the time and effort can never repay what you put in or what you do. As Laura and others said, that small amount of money makes an absolutely massive, massive springboard for sometimes things that go on and then become sustainable. And we don't always get everything right, I'm not saying we don't by any stretch of the imagination, but the passion, the enthusiasm to help and to get into our communities, they've been a void for some time. And getting back in and sorting out the likes, and as the Chair said, taking that next step, moving us forward into the next era of what the local area committees can and will be is benefit to us all. So the more that we can get out to engage with everybody, it's a great opportunity. And that only just touched a flavour of really what goes on in this and we've got some fantastic officers and stuff. I'll stop rambling there, Chair, but to say that I think we've made big steps, there's a long way to go on this journey and it's how we take everybody together. £25 grand in the lot for a ward, by any means, and if you look at, there should be some going around about how we've distributed accordingly, but we have tried to help and take as many groups and friends and individuals as always. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I think a few other people want to make some comments, so I'm going to start with Diane. And then David, I think you wanted to say something, and then there's Zahira.
Thank you, Mary. Yeah, I think this follows on largely from what Terry said. Because for me, yes, the money does make a difference and the fact that we started to meet together in Richmond during Covid, online, to support each other as members of community groups, to get through some very difficult days. And because we got the like, we could produce a little card that said to people, this is how you get your prescriptions delivered, this is where you can have your food delivered from, this is where you can get counselling or help and advice. And we started from there and we've carried on doing that and working together. And we had the Tree of Hope celebration every year and we've got a little bit of money and we know that. The tree blew down last year in the winds, but it doesn't matter because we've already allocated money to replace it with something bigger and better next year. So it's just that possibility that we can work with communities and support what's important to communities. I think that really is. And it makes me so happy that during this year, we've invited senior managers and directors in the council out to the communities, out to the wards who have had a walkabout and we've managed to, you know, bend their ears about what's important. And Philip's here today and I've seen Carl somewhere, I don't know where he's disappeared to, and we've got Ruth here. So, you know, we've got, I think it's not only us as members and the communities that are taking that seriously, but we're actually getting directors and senior managers to take us seriously as well now. And that can, like for me, suggest the next step. If we're doing that good on so little money, how about the influence and decision-making for the years to come so we can make decisions where we live for where we live? Thanks, Mary.
Oh, it's not squealed, yeah, that's good. I'm brave with councillor Trish, I'm not normally one who belongs meetings, I simply repeat what other people have said, particularly when I've not had my tea yet, but I'm more or less, I'm a little like, say, this end-of-year report, this is not what we've achieved, this is what you've achieved, you know? What we've done as an area committee is what you've done. And as we get more and more squeezed as a council, it's Budget Council next week and not the best picture in the world, we are more and more reliant on the people that are sat in this room. And the little bit of money that we can give to you goes such a long way, makes such a difference. And, you know, it's only disappointing that we haven't got more to do because you're achieving stuff, you're achieving all these things and it's just, as a committee, it's an absolute pleasure to work with you, to see your faces here tonight. So just to say thank you and I'll shut up there because I'll say I haven't had my tea yet, I won't go on too long.
Thank you. I think for me, in the Darnall Ward, Ward Pots mean that small grassroots groups can apply for funding. And it might be small amounts of funding, but actually it goes a very, very long way in community groups. And even though we might be funding aid activity, but actually, when you have conversations with local people, you quickly realise how this helps in communities like Darnall. So, you know, to improve community cohesion, removing barriers, help with the cost of living, reducing social isolation. I mean, it might just be a coffee group, but actually, when you talk to the people who are using the coffee group and you listen to how they benefit, you know, there are so many areas that these pots of money can bring benefits to. And it's helped empower our communities and we need to continue that. And, you know, I was in those meetings with Terry when he was adamant that this money went towards local area committees, you know, and he fought really hard for that actually. But it's really, really helped communities and I know that because I speak to people who apply for funding and I go and meet groups and they tell me and it's in lots of different ways. It's given us a real opportunity to do real meaningful consultation with local groups. You know, it gives us an opportunity to go in, have a coffee, sit with people and really understand their issues and things that they want to change in their local communities. And without having this, it's difficult because where are local groups meant to pay for room rent, you know, advertisement, or teas and coffees? So, you know, a small amount goes a long, long way and it benefits local residents, but also as local councillors, it gives us an opportunity to hear about local issues, but also what people like in their communities too.
Thanks for those comments. And there's a list of all the organisations that received funding in the report pack so you can have a look. If you recognise anybody from your area, that's great. But there's a whole list of people there and groups that have benefited, but it's ultimately the community that have benefited from this funding. But I'd like to just also thank Hooda and Sophie and Abby, and also Amir, who's now moved on from us, but he's over there, for all the hard work in getting this money out to people because it's not easy. You think if you've got £100,000, you can just easily distribute it, but it's been really, really hard work on their part getting that money out. So I'd like to record those thanks for the officers as well, please. No, you've done well, everybody's done well, so thanks for that, Mo. Okay, we're going to move on to item six, which is Ruth Bell. She's sat here, she's ahead of our parks, which includes not just parks, but a whole range of services as well. I think the whole city is well-known for its parks, there's some absolutely wonderful parks across the city, destination parks, city parks, local parks, pocket parks. Ruth's in charge of them all. I think one of our parks managers is here as well, Mick, and personally I'd like to thank them for all the work they do because I think they do a tremendous job. But I'm going to let Ruth sort of blow her own trumpet and tell us what she's been doing and what's planned for parks. And then we'll go into breakout groups, ask some questions, then go into breakout groups. So thank you, thanks, Ruth.
Thanks, Mary. I'm not the item, part of the item, please don't think it's me. I'm not here alone, as Mary said, Mick is here, also Simon, who's a fairly new service manager in our service, and Gareth is here from the sports and leisure team. So we've come as a bit of an ensemble, but it's me that's going to talk to you. And I will say, it's a bit of a pleasure to come to a meeting where they don't say, you've got 10 minutes. Because when I've got 10 minutes, I have to speak incredibly fast to get my 40-minute presentation into 25 minutes. So I'm going to hopefully be able to take a little bit of time to go through things. The way these slides start is I start by talking about the city, so Parks and Countryside Service, everything that we do, and then hopefully I'll bring it down into the stuff that you recognise in your local area. And I will say, I do recognise a few faces of people that are involved in our parks and green spaces and it's really good to see you here. Sorry, that was my water. It's really great to see you here coming to talk about your parks and I'm sure that you'll have a number of questions. And our plan is for me to do this presentation. We haven't planned a great deal for the breakout sessions. What we thought we would do is just give you guys a chance to talk because I'm going to be talking for this first bit and I'm sure that you have things that you want to say to us or ask us or talk to us about issues or things, hopefully things that are going really, really well. So we'll be quite informal in the breakout, if that's okay. It's just an opportunity for us to hear from you rather than just you hearing from us. So let's back on. We have had the pleasure of going to all of the Lacks now, this is the last lack, the only lack that we've not been to yet. And there are a number of slides that we do at every lack because we think it's really important that people across the city see what it is that Parks and Countryside is. Obviously, when you live near a park, it's easy to think that Parks and Countryside is that park or those few green spaces that you go to, that you visit regularly. But actually, we do an awful lot of different things and we cover the entire city. It isn't just parks, as Mary indicated, actually, we are the Parks and Countryside Service. And I'd love to say we do what it says on the tin, but actually that's not right because there's a lot of things that you wouldn't automatically know are in Parks and Countryside. We do, in addition to managing all of the traditional parks and public realms, so those parks that you would recognise as parks, the countryside sites that you would recognise as countryside sites, we also look after woodlands across the city. We're responsible for allotments, we're responsible for closed landfill, we're responsible for an awful lot of playgrounds and sports facilities within those green spaces. We are responsible for closed burial grounds, which might sound strange given that we're not bereavement services, but we actually tend to a number of burial grounds that have been closed for a number of years across the city. Excuse me. We have a botanical garden, we have fishing sites, we have a number of cafes across the city with hopefully a lot more to come. And we also have a number of education and visitor centres. We have, I'll have to read these numbers off the slide because they're so big I can never remember them. We have 722 dual waste bins across the city that we empty multiple times a week, we have dog bins, we clear litter, we cut grass, we do pretty much anything that you can think of in a green space, it's Parks and Countryside that is responsible for doing that. In addition to that, we also manage housing land. As a result of a service-level agreement, we manage land on their behalf. So we are actually in green spaces even if they're not part of the Parks and Countryside estate, if that makes sense. This is the second slide that we also always show and I can see Philip sat over there probably thinking, I'm going to check those numbers later. We call this the Slide of Doom. It's just a slide that we put up because we think it's important when we're talking about the scale of things that we have to do across the city, the scale of things that we want to do, that it's recognised that that is being done and has been done in the context of reducing budgets. So the top line indicates how our revenue budget has reduced over the last, I can't really do that maths, but 14 years. And the bottom line is an indication of how our income has gone up. And the bottom line is an indication of how our income has gone up. One thing I will say, I say this every time, this is not a figure that has gone from zero. We don't, we don't have the figures easily available for the years before that. But as you can see, our income has gone up significantly in recent years. But what it isn't doing is fully plugging the gap from where we started budget wise. Income generation is massively important to us. It can be a controversial topic. People obviously don't like the idea of commercialisation in parks. But we do have a number of things that help us bring money in to make, certainly individual parks have been much more self-attaining, not relying on the council pot of money, which is reducing often year on year. So yeah, everything that we do is in the context of us having a lot less money than we had a few years ago. And I think it was Terry who said, when it went talking about the Lacks and the works in the ward, that, you know, we don't always get it right. That's also true of parks and every service in the council, actually, to be fair. We don't always get it right, but we hope we get an awful lot right and we do it with less money. That's why sometimes things look different in your local park because we can't do what we were able to do 15 years ago. It's also true that we don't necessarily always want to do what we were doing 15 years ago. But certainly we can't afford to do everything the same as we were able to a number of years ago. In addition to reducing budgets and wanting to ensure that sites stay safe, welcome, welcoming, accessible, pleasant, we also have a number of challenges that quite frankly are getting worse year on year. And you will see this in your area and you'll see it not only in park sites because it happens on lots of, lots of land across the city. Antisocial behaviour is a very, very costly issue. It's one that we see in parks. It impacts on our ability to do things. It causes us challenges when fences are destroyed and we can't afford to replace them. We have, with having less money, one of the things that we're having to do differently with less money is, for example, our planting. We're having to look at how we can save money, how we can save money and do things differently and how we can save money, do things differently and consider nature and the climate in everything that we do. We, we also do have a number of new facilities within our parks. So a really good example of this is cafes. We've had a couple of new cafes open up within the last couple of years, which is really great for those parks. It's something that people often say that they want in their site. And we talk about having a brew, a loo and something to do because they're three key things that mean that people not only will visit their site, but also that they're able to stay there longer than they otherwise would without those facilities being available. But often with facilities being in parks comes an increased management cost. It doesn't come at no cost. Sometimes those things are borne by the operator, but that's not always the case. An example outside of your ward, obviously, is, outside of your wards is the Rose Garden Cafe, which you'll know recently, obviously, had to close a couple of years ago. And that was because not enough money had been put into the building because there wasn't enough money there to do it. And I think it was Diane that particularly touched on what happened during Covid. And I don't know how much each of you saw this personally in your green spaces. But during the pandemic, we were absolutely blown away by how, how many people wanted to visit their green spaces as soon as the restrictions started to be lifted. There was an example that you absolutely will have seen on the front page of certainly the Star and actually national newspapers of Encliff Park, where it was likened to a number of, I don't know whether it was African or Indian elephants, with of rubbish having to be removed from the site every day. I can't remember the exact number, but it was something like three or four elephants, as in that weight of rubbish was having to be removed from the site every day due to the number of people that were wanting to visit their, their local green spaces. We saw people rediscovering places that they hadn't visited for a long time and also people discovering them for the first time. People who hadn't ventured into their local space realised what they had on their doorstep, where perhaps they'd travelled a little bit further for a green space previously. Now, obviously, there was some tail off of those visitor numbers as restrictions were lifted and life got largely back to normal. But what we have seen is that people still want to come to their green spaces more than they did before the green, before the pandemic. And also they want to engage with those green spaces and us as a service in a different way, which is absolutely fantastic, even though it is not without its challenges. The number of, I'm hoping this is not our future slide and I'm not ruining a surprise later, but the number of friends groups increased from around about 80 to over 100 immediately following the pandemic because people heard of rediscovered or discovered their green space and wanted to be involved in that green space going forward and wanted to ask us as a service and us as a council to do things differently, do more, talk to them about what was going to happen in their green space. And that is absolutely brilliant. It's what, what we want to see. We can't do it alone. We need people passionate about their green spaces working with us. But popularity of a site and more engagement with a site does often come at a, at a cost, a cost that we are happy to work with if we've got the money and we've got a way of, a way of doing that. But yeah, not, not without cost. This is the unpleasant one, diseases. We talk about ash dieback. Some of you might be aware of ash dieback, which is a disease impacting ash trees across the city. The bill for dealing with, with ash dieback over, I think it's over a 10, 10 year period, is going to be well over £10 million. That's how many trees are going to need to be felled in Sheffield because of this disease that will make them unsafe otherwise. We don't, we don't get any extra money for that. There's no funding that allows us to, to manage the removal, the safe removal of those trees. It's something that we are currently largely absorbing into the park's budget. That won't be possible going forward because there is a year coming up within the next three or four years where actually the amount that we will need to pay to deal with ash trees is more than the whole of the park's budget. Staff and machinery, everything costs more now than it did 10, 14 years ago. And obviously budgets have gone down, not up. Now our staff members have gone down, obviously. But we do still need people in those sites, managing those sites day to day. Machinery is often more expensive and obviously one of the things that we're very keen to do is make sure that our machinery is A, as green as it can be and B, fit for purpose. And the purpose of those machines is often different to the purpose that we would have had 15 years ago. We're not just looking to cut grass. Actually, in some sites, we're looking to, for example, cut much longer grass and remove it immediately because we've allowed it to grow, which is really great for the environment. And when we cut it, we don't want it to just be left and cause there to not be further growth. We want to take it away so that the site can really regenerate itself. All of that comes at more cost. All of that is massively, massively important to us responding to both the climate emergency and the nature emergencies, both of which have been declared in Sheffield. Just a final point on the antisocial behaviour. Fly tipping, massive issue across the city. Lots and lots of hotspots that we know about and have known about for years. But actually, it's popping up in places that we haven't always expected it and that comes at a significant cost. That's not exclusively on park sites. That's on housing sites and quite frankly, often anywhere that people can get to dump rubbish. That's very, it's very expensive. It's very time consuming. And it's very unpleasant for people that are living in those areas. That's not what people want in their areas. We want people to have beautiful, if possible, welcoming, safe spaces, not spaces where they have to climb round a load of rubbish to be able to access them. So yeah. And this follows on from a bit of the theme of the conversation earlier about the monies, where councillors said, we can't do everything in the ward ourselves. The council certainly can't do it themselves and it's absolutely true in parks. If it were solely down to park staff, the parks and countryside sites across the city would not look the way that they look. One of the reasons that they look the way they do is because there are hundreds of people across the city who work with us on those sites that they love so much, supporting us and supporting that site so it can be the best site it possibly can be. We, we tot up volunteering hours and we actually, we actually often apply sort of a, you know, minimum wage to that. And the, the amounts of money that, I mean, you could say that we save, but actually it's more the amount that we benefit from volunteer hours is thousands and thousands of pounds from people who know their local sites, know what, what they and others want in that area and are willing to give up their time and come and work with us to make that site the site they want it to be. So yeah, parks does not do it on, on their own. We could not do it on our own. And we're really grateful to every single person that gives up even five minutes of their time because Parks and Countryside is the service that it is because of those people. It ranges from, litter picking is a very common one, but right the way through to tree planting. And I can tell in this picture here that that's what Diane's doing. Because quite frankly, I recognise the shovels because I've done it myself. It's absolutely fantastic. We have lots of, lots of engagement doing exactly what we need on those sites. It's absolutely amazing. So now sort of honing in a little bit more on the East Lack area. Within the East Lack area, there are 125 recreational sites. Now, what I will say is that they will vary from quite big parks, really traditional parks, things that you would say, that's my local park, down to very small pocket areas of, of just green space. We in Parks and Countryside, a few years ago, started talking about what standard our land was at. And a lot of you will be familiar with the Green Flag, which is achieved on a number of sites actually within the, within the East Lack. And Green Flag is a national assessment of green, of green spaces. It has certain criteria that you have to meet, including, for example, having a friends group. And then they score it and they, they will award the Green Flag sites. So a few years ago, the Sheffield Standard was born out of that. And it was, excuse me, it was a slimmed down version of the Green Flag. So it was a much smaller number of the criteria that we, we go to our sites and we measure and we say, does this achieve what we would call the Sheffield Standard? I will say that we haven't reviewed those criteria within the Sheffield Standard for a number of years and we're looking to do that within the next 12 months or so. Because actually, a lot has changed in the world. It doesn't take into account the likes of biodiversity, which is massively important going forward. So we will be looking to review exactly which criteria we, we want those sites to hit for the Sheffield Standard. But within the East Lack area, 72% of sites hit the Sheffield Standard. So we would say that there are the quality that we, we are happy with. That is in many ways a fantastic number. But doing some really quick maths in my head, it does mean that 28% of sites within the area do not meet that standard. So there's 28% of sites that as a minimum, we would want to improve the, the quality of those sites up to, up to the Sheffield Standard. There are a number of parks in this area that have got some quite big plans potentially for, for improvements. So not small scale projects with just little bits of money, but actually capital projects where hopefully some, some bigger improvements will be made. The reference here, so Hansworth Park, High Hazels, Mather Road and Tinsley Green. And then there are also a lot of smaller projects planned as well over the next 12 months on sites within the East Lack area. I touched very briefly on biodiversity. This map on the left shows you where we already have sites that we would say are ecologically rich. So the yellow, which is probably the easiest thing for you to see from the audience, is sites that are local wildlife sites. So you already have a lot within this area that are, are great for nature. That's not to say that they couldn't be improved, but they are great for nature, which is a fantastic starting point. This is a map of recreational facilities with the Sheffield Standard. So green means pass, red means fail. As you can see, there's far too much red on that map. We need to change it. So ideally, it's actually all green. Just to touch very briefly on allotments. So there are nine allotment sites within the East Lack area. Sorry, just let me turn to the page because I need to read what this acronym is because I'm so against the team and what it was. So the National Society of Allotment and Leisure Gardeners, by their assessment, we're about 426 plots short in the area of what we would ideally have. As an example of that, Corker Bottom site has got 61 plots, of which 12 of them are currently unlettable. So they are overgrown. Historically, they've had fly tipping on them, which might mean that there are issues with the likes of asbestos, which means that, means that that plot is going to be at least very expensive to bring back into, into use. We've got 26 people on the waiting list. So even if we were able to bring all 12 sites in, we'd still be short of what that single site needs. This is all just an example of the allotment's challenge really. But we've estimated that it would cost around about £6,000 to bring those unlettable plots back into use. We're hoping to find the funding to do that. And what we'll do is split a number of those plots so that we can get more people on allotments, more people that want to have allotments on allotments growing their own food. Similar to park sites, we have a number of antisocial behaviour type issues across our allotment sites, across the entire city. That includes fly tipping. It includes people getting access to the site that shouldn't do. It includes burning of materials and the like. Some, some recent things that have happened last year is that, as you can see here, that there's new security fencing at Manor allotments. The access to Hollands End allotments has been improved and new gates have been, have been put up at further sites. So some work has been done last year. And what we're going to do next year on allotments is use that Sheffield Standard assessment to look at what other improvements are needed on, on other allotment sites. And this is the really nice bit of the presentation. This is where we show you the things that hopefully you actually all already know, the things that we've done fairly recently within the East Lack. So anyone that's familiar with Hollands End Park, and I know that Diane is very familiar, the tennis courts there have been, have been redone and actually are now very, very playable, which they were not before. There's also been a play upgrade. I think there's a picture of that on the next slide, actually. There's been quite a lot of work done at the Sky Edge Fields, which has both been securing the site but also improving some of the access, the access to those that we would want to be accessing the site, i.e. not the bikes and the quad bikes that try and access the site and cause problems. New playground at Woodthorpe Ravine, that's, that's not us. TED. That's TED. We're absolutely not taking responsibility for your stuff. This is, this is TED and Green Estate. Absolutely fantastic. It is on one of, one of the most beautiful sites in the city. And then Mather Road, new playground. Interesting fact, this is across the whole city. In, what year are we in now? 24. So I think between 2021 and let's say March 2024, there were seven new playgrounds built in the city. And I don't mean kit was changed at an existing playground. I mean brand new playgrounds were built in places that didn't have playgrounds before. I've actually only worked in parks for three and a half years. But my colleagues who have been there since time began have said that that is unheard of. There's, there's never been so many, so many new play facilities brought in in such a small, a small period of time. So that's, that's very exciting for the city and anyone that's got a young one, which I have. So I know some of the playgrounds in Sheffield already quite well. Next slide, please, darling. Thank you. This is what I thought. Hollands End Park, yeah, new play renewals, which was mentioned on the previous slide. That has not been finished. Anybody that quite frankly has been outside will know that it's just been quite a wet winter so far, following quite a wet autumn. And we've got a number of sites, including, for example, a few in the, in the East Lack, where we're quite frankly unable to finish projects because we need to wait until the weather and most importantly, the ground conditions improve. Because if we bring in any kind of heavy machinery, we're going to damage the site to an extent that it will take a really long time to recover. Again, this is on Manor Field. So this is, this is TED's world. The sub scheme, Manor Field is well underway. And this is another example of we cannot and do not do it alone. Green Estate are heavily involved in that and it, it wouldn't be happening without, without their involvement and their support. Thank you. So what I've said so far is, is what we've done. There's a lot more to come. I'm not going to talk at length about this, but this might be something that we I'm not going to talk at length about this, but this might be something that we want to talk about in, it might be something that you want to ask about in the breakout areas, if you've heard anything about it. But we do have a number of improvements coming in the very near future. Certainly within the next year, they're going to be started at work in Handsworth, work in High Hazles. That was really exciting. I feel Paul, like that one has been, we've been talking about it since you and I first met, which was when we genuinely had to walk six feet away from each other as we walked around High Hazles. So we are finally making some progress, which is really exciting. Tinsley Meadows and then also Tinsley Green. And this is an example of the public consultation for the Tinsley Meadows sites. We are, we're putting our surveys on the council's relatively new, relatively new consultation sites and we're getting, we're getting a lot of engagement from it. It allows us to do it in a much more engaging way. It's not just boring questions and boring text boxes to answer. It allows us to give a lot more information and for people to be redirected to where there's information outside of that site. So we're getting a lot of engagement from that and we're getting feedback on what it is that people want on those sites. I'm not going to say too much about this, but my colleague Gareth is here and he will, I don't want to put you on the spot Gareth, but he will talk about this later. He'll be happy to talk to anyone about it. A number of consultations that are happening on some sports projects that are happening within green spaces. The Sports and Leisure Team and Parks and Countryside are two separate services, but we are so very heavily interlinked because we've worked together on a number of these projects. It's always really exciting for us when the Sports and Leisure Team have access to some funding that means that something can be improved on our sites because we know that if people come to do, to do sports, number one, they're making themselves healthier, but also they might stay on our sites and enjoy that beautiful green space that they're in. So Gareth will talk about that a little bit more later and I've got a feeling they might even have got handouts, which will be great. There is a QR code that we can direct you to later if that's helpful. Again, this is just future projects. This is just certainly keep letting you know the things that we are looking at across the city. This is not exclusively in the Black. So I've mentioned already that we, number one, we want to improve site quality. So we want to have, have many, all of our sites at the quality we would expect, at the quality you would want if you were visiting one of those sites. So we will be refreshing the Sheffield Standard. We will also be reviewing our sites to check which do and do not meet the Sheffield Standard. We also hope to have more green flag sites. There were a number of additional green flag sites awarded last year. So for example, Hillsborough Park got a green flag for the first time, which is really exciting. We do hope to keep putting sites forward for green flag. We will be looking at renewing facilities within parks where that's possible, where there's funding, where there's a project that, where we can make a change, make an improvement to a site. Across the entire city, we need to make our sites more accessible and there's so many different factors to that. They need to be, they need to have path networks that allow people to get from A to B within a site. A really important topic is when we're talking about playgrounds, is we have actually very little accessible play within the city. We are looking at that across the city, at where we can make changes. We've actually installed a number of these black seats, which allow, which allows a parent or carer to swing a child that cannot do it themselves. That's actually been a really easy change that we've been able to make at a number of sites across the city to immediately make some of that play accessible to children or young adults that it wouldn't have been accessible to before. But quite frankly, it's not enough. We need to support children to be able to play at their local site rather than have to travel to a specific site that's got a little bit of accessible play. So we are looking at what inclusive equipment is available and how we can get that into a number of sites across the city so that all areas have got an element of accessible play as a minimum. I touched briefly on the need to consider biodiversity in what we do. We do need to make our sites better for wildlife, even where our site is, yeah, even, I thought I was going to have no time limit and I've, yeah, obviously I nearly done that right. We need to make our sites better for wildlife. Even where a site is quite good, we need to do more. TED was invited to join us on a task and finish group for our committee, which was looking at how we respond to the nature emergency that was declared in Sheffield in 2021, I think it was, June 2021. We need to change the way that we do things and we need to understand what that change is going to look like and then we need to talk to people about it because sites are going to look different. You'll all be aware that there was a commitment made in Parks and Countryside to reduce the amount of glyphosate that was used. So we don't use it, for example, on soft surfacing within park sites. That means that our sites are going to start to look different. We've had a couple of years where the old glyphosate was keeping things relatively neat. Things are potentially, for example, going to get a little bit messier. That's not what we used to see and it's great for nature and it is what we need to do, but we need to make sure that you understand what you can expect from your sites and why it's really important and also talk to you about what you think we can do more within those sites to improve nature. Next slide please. Oh, there you go. Any questions?
We've got breakout groups now. Do you want to go straight into those or do you, I don't know that anybody, people could ask questions in those groups unless there's anything for clarification now. Just clarification, not comments. So you know, just clarification on the presentation that you've just had.
I'm not aware that any of, any playground, sorry Alice, I'm not aware that any playgrounds have been taken away from park sites. Is there anything, is there a specific site you're thinking of? It may be a housing site. Can I talk to you about this, about this when we go into the breakout because I'll be able to get some information for you? Apologies that I don't know immediately.
All right, so we're going to the breakouts now. How much time did you think we have?
We've got about half an hour.
Half an hour. So Ruth, do you want, have you got specific questions or what do you want people to do in those breakout sessions?
So we'd like to be as informal as possible. If we can break into two groups, there's quite a lot here, so that will still be a little bit unwieldy. But to be honest, what we thought we would throw out as questions to you is what do you think we're doing well? What do you think we're not doing well? And what would you like to see in your local area? But to be honest, that's just a really rough guide. If the conversation takes us in a different, a different way, that's completely fine. We'd just like to hear from you as much as anything.
Sorry, the changes that climate change will bring and what we need to do to mitigate that as well, so I think that's really important. Okay. I could say a lot more, but we've had enough. So if you want to go in there and just pick a table with people you know or people you don't know and we'll try and get some stimulation. Laura, the councillor for that area, and I think you've had his answer, but we will put the question and the answer in the minutes so that everybody will be at our side of that for the next, when the minutes are published. Are there any more public questions from the meeting? So, oh, we'll take Lynn first. Could you just say who you are?
Yeah. My name's Lynn Rooney. I'm a resident of Stradbroke Estate, which is part of Richmond Ward. I was hoping there might be somebody here from housing, but I can't see that there is anybody from housing specifically. So chair, if you could, sort of, and potentially the manager, if you could forward this concern to housing or the appropriate bodies. For very many months now, there's been lots of issues on Stradbroke Estate to do with the environment. Actually, it's quite pertinent that this meeting tonight's been about the Parks and Countryside because I do firmly believe that some places are created more equal than others in terms of public space and amenity. Stradbroke Estate has lots of green spaces and there seems to be a perennial argument between different bodies of the council as to who's responsible for litter, for example, for about five, since for months. And that, as everybody knows, once people start dumping stuff or litter appears, more appears, it becomes a bit of a spiral. The verges on the estate, like lots of other areas, I know this isn't unique to Stradbroke, the verges are a disgrace. The general condition of that estate is appalling. I'm quite ashamed to live there. It used to be a really nice place to live and it is not anymore. And I'm afraid people seem to be passing the book as to who's responsible for doing the work. The latest answer we've got is that there will be some community payback litter pick in March. Now, for me, that's a dereliction of duty because that litter should have been dealt with long ago. It's been brought to people's attention and there are plenty of wardens, we see plenty of neighbourhood wardens walking about. I'm not, I'm genuinely, this isn't facetious, I'm genuinely not sure what they do. This is probably a bit old school, but when they're walking around, maybe if they had a bag, had a litter picker and picked a bit of rubbish up, but maybe that's a bit too controversial. But for me, that would be a better use of, great, never got a call back. And again, that's quite commonplace that you just don't get contact and call backs from services that should be calling you back. So I'm bringing it here really out of desperation. I'm a fairly able, I'm a previous councillor, I'm fairly able vocal person to try and make my views in and about things, to get things sorted out, but seem to be reaching a real impasse. And as I said, the condition of that estate is terrible and I do think, you know, we have lovely destination parks in the city, they're great and we've written some notes down actually in the breakout groups that, you know, there is in the west of the city, as we know, they have all of that capital, they have all of that resource in terms of interested people and very able people. We've got time, we retire early in good health, we're able to give their time to those parks and that's great. We just don't get that in the east and particularly on council estates, they do generally seem to be forgotten. Thank you.
Thanks Lynn for that question. I can't answer to say who's responsible for that at the moment, but we will get the names of the streets that you're really concerned about and if necessary, we'll get somebody to down there with your local councillors to do a walkabout perhaps so that with, I'm speaking with the two local councillors and the issues that she's got, whether it's housing or public realm that needs to deal with those issues down there, I have, actually I have seen some of that, some of the problems that you've highlighted. So I'm suggesting with your local councillors that somebody goes down there with the relevant officers, has a look and then identifies whose responsibility it is to ensure that that is cleaned up as soon as possible, not necessarily wait for community payback, but to ensure that it's cleaned up and that a plan for ensuring that it happens in the future as well.
Something else that I forgot to, I got everybody clearing without it, but basically, I don't think there's a functioning tenants association on my estate and I do think that is a problem when you have areas that don't have functioning tenants associations because there's, you know, that ability to be able to challenge isn't there. And I do think it's probably no coincidence that the estate has deteriorated at the same time as we don't seem to have actually had a functioning tenants association. So again, this is something for housing really, that I would have liked the opportunity to have been able to speak to housing. Thank you.
Okay, so Diane, Rick, Diane, David, do you want to answer any of that question?
We're well aware of the issues that Lyn is raising and we have had walkabouts in the past and we report those areas on a very regular basis, but if they're still being neglected, they are one of our hotspots. If they are still being neglected, we will take officers out there and make sure that we get, you know, Lyn is able to bear witness to the fact that we've been out there and we've cleared them up. It doesn't stop the wind blowing them back in again, but we will, it's symptomatic of the estate.
Agree more with you. It's not for lack of trying. One thing I was going to raise that is about better coordination and cooperation between departments because I'm sure we've all experienced it where you phone up and say, oh, there's a mattress on that green space and I would say, oh, it's not us, it's Parks and Parks. Oh, it's not us, it's education and education, oh, it's not us, it's Amy and Amy. So it's not us, it's housing. And you just go around in a circle and just, there's someone who'll actually go out and do something rather than, as you say, passing the book and...
Okay. What we've just said now in the meeting that we'll organise, with your local councillors will organise a walkabout and will identify those responsibilities it is and look at how, getting, clearing the rubbish and the fly tipping and also what's going to happen in the longer term. Is that okay that I've said that for you? Nabila, do you want to add to that, Monferrin, if you're not a Richmond councillor?
I am not a Richmond councillor, no, but I'm not the Chair of Housing for the council, but I'm on the Housing Committee representing Labour. But I'm happy to pick up the point about Tara's with you Lyn and see if we can do anything through the housing services to get the Tara up and running again if there isn't a very active one.
Nabila, that's really useful.
Hello, thank you. Gillian Briggs, Head Teacher from Fillmore Community Primary School. In Ruth's presentation, she briefly touched on a proposal, a consultation for that Fillmore currently undertaking and Gareth, just in our breakout space as well, spoke about the consultation, which I hope that you will take the time to fill in. Most days, or should I say every day virtually, we are on school streets and we do talk to our local community, we talk to parents and we have spoken to lots of parents and local community about this consultation and urge them to take part, which I believe they have. And when we speak, so they, you know, we believe that is overwhelmingly in support of. So my question is, if the consultation that comes back also shows that it is in, you know, in favour, it's very positive, as locally elected councillors, would you also support this proposal?
So we need to...
That's my question.
I'm going to ask Ruth, go on. Oh, sorry. So I'll get Ruth to just explain briefly what the process is following consultation, if that's okay. Happy to do that. Are you aware of what the...
I'm not closing up to the details.
Okay. Any... It's not going through what the process is. My question is that if the community supports our proposal, will councillors who are locally elected by the community support the proposal?
We look at the results of the consultation. We don't make the decision. We will have a say in that decision, but we will, we'll need to look at the consultation and take in all the views of the community, not just the parents of the children that go to the school, but also the wider community as well. So that's what I'm prepared to say at the moment. We represent everybody in this community, not just a small group of people. Obviously, we just need to take, if you must write in this area.
Yeah, I also agree with Mary. We would like to hear more from the community. So I know a lot of parents have replied by the consultation, but local residents who live around the area, that they have not responded very well at all to the consultation and what I'd like to hear is their views too, because that's green residents and not just the parents from the school. Well, we have asked officers to try to reach out and put on sessions where they are engaging with local residents because I know there's lots of issues. The consultation was put online and I know a lot of residents in that area find it difficult to go online and most of them probably don't know that there's a consultation that's going on. So it's our responsibility to make sure that people are aware of it and try to capture as many voices as possible.
And that's why, one of the reasons we asked Gareth is to come today to add additionality to a consultation that's already been undertaken, not just with the school, the parents and the kids, but also some of the local community. And obviously, with the questionnaire gone round today, we'd like to see what the results of that would be as well. And obviously, with the questionnaire gone round today, we'd like to see what the results of that would be as well.
Hiya, I'm Chris Mart. I noticed you touched on earlier on about repairs to parks and local parks. Some time back, there was quite a serious incident in Seaton Park where everything was destroyed. And I just wondered if there was anything or any plans to repair that or put the park back? I mean, it's been demolished now completely. There's no play area. It's just, just filled with a couple of bits in now.
Okay, I'm going to ask councillor Ninehan to answer that question because she's your councillor.
Yeah, I was up there a few weeks ago planting trees with the kids from the local school in memory of councillor Onmercy. It had to be removed, the equipment, because it was dangerous. Basically, it had been vandalised. Councillor Richards, Charlotte Richards and I were walking around there after the tree planting and we're looking at getting play facilities replaced on there. We're looking at Sky Edge Fields for play facilities. We're looking at replacing something that, A, what's affordable and B, what's sustainable. But it is on our list of priorities along with Sky Edge Fields.
Right, thank you. My name's Irene Day and I'm the Chair of Sheffield Fifty Plus as well as being involved with Friends of Richmond Park. My question isn't actually a like question as such, but I did put it in writing. So I don't know, you've not got it. And what I, as Chair of Sheffield Plus, I wanted to know why it's necessary to set up a public safety protection order in the city centre with particular emphasis on the people that are most vulnerable in our society. And I, first of all, I wondered whether any of you had actually read the article in the Sheffield Tribune regarding this.
Hi, the Public Space Protection Order, A, I did read the article in the Tribune and I thought it was a very good article as well. It brought in, into like all the different issues. The Public Space Protection Order is also looking to go up to Park Hill there to be included. So I've been involved with residents in the consultation. The majority of residents in that part of the city are in favour of it. But some people have highlighted the issues of it targeting vulnerable people and the divide that it can bring. So, and people have raised issues of civil liberties with me and it's very complex.
I know.
So I'm answering this because I spent a huge amount of time looking at it and what they've done in other cities like Manchester. So I've been looking at the consequences of it. I think that's why there is a consultation. So you must go online and give your views. We want as many views as possible. Car drinking, £100 because they haven't got it. So it's how do we do it? What services are available? And working with other agencies, I think, if it is introduced, it's how it's introduced and how then you work with other agencies in a supportive manner. But please, anybody who's interested in this, please get involved in the consultation so we've got as wide a view as possible.
Yeah.
Can I just add something to that, that a lot of the people that you might be referring to, people who are, a lot of the? I just wanted to add that the, you mentioned the vulnerable people that may be in the city centre. There are lots and lots of services that are there available, who are very proactive in trying to reach those people already. So it's not that they are bereft of help, that help is there, the services are there. People actively go out to offer that help and try to mitigate and intervene with those individuals. And it's not necessarily about those people that that Public Space Protection Order is about. It's about other activity in the city centre which causes great risks to people at certain times of the day, mainly in the evening. And it's something that the police are very interested in introducing as well.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry. What concerned me most was, although as you say, there are services available, in the article it actually mentions that the Archer Project and Ben's Place have had to close in an afternoon. Therefore, there's no facilities at all moving the problem. Plus, I do appreciate that you've got a lot of financial problems and I do understand that you're losing the household support grant at the end of March. And I know that's already affected some of the staff that are involved with that. So I just wondered whether there's actually been any contingency plans made.
As I say, there are many, many services around that are helping those people that you're referring to. Your comments, we could feed those comments that you're making now back into the consultation so that people are aware of them. I'm sure you're not the only person making those comments either. So I think it's the people who, the people that are doing the consultation, the people that are working on this are well aware of that. And will then, when the report comes through the various stages, that will be, something that will be addressed.
Yeah, I mean, it's like, you know, as councillors said before, there's a consultation, but it's online. Those people on the street have got no idea what's going to happen. They don't know that.
The consultation, as I understand it, is pretty wide because of the nature of the regulations that go along with it. Certainly, the reports will be taken back to the committee that deals with this, this kind of action, which is the Communities' Parks and Leisure Committee. They will have a, their members will ultimately make the decision on this. But there will be various stages before that decision is made, that they will have an opportunity to scrutinise the findings of the consultation and any interventions that will be taking place or what the police and the council will be doing to work together to ensure that this, it would be a success and those, the issues you raised about other people.
Check on this with that committee to find out if they are doing any paper copies, leaving any paper copies around the city centre for people to access so that if there is paper copies, people can pick them up and fill them in rather than having to do it, go online to do it.
This is a major problem, right?
I have to know how.
Thousand members and I can only reach 500 of them because the rest don't have IT access. You know, and you can't get an overall view of what the whole city thinks because people can't access, they don't even know consultation and this.
Yeah, so maybe if you can email in and find out what other ways they are trying to consult with people. All right.
I will look at how far they've taken the consultation at the moment as well. We've got, obviously, some people, when you've been in the other room, will notice that there's an exhibition on at the moment. And that is, the exhibition is called Living on the Breadline and it's been, it's going around the city and it's here in this area at the moment. It's going to Barnsley next and it's been going around the country as well. Please have a look. Some of the people that have been involved in developing the constantly event and the exhibition are part of the church groups. So if anybody wants to have another look or come down at another occasion to have a look at the exhibition, we just would like to encourage people to do that. That's what I've been asked to say and thank you. The next public meeting will be in, oh, we haven't got a set date, so for the next public meeting. But it will be after the May elections and then we'll certainly announce the date as soon as we've got that date. We'll have the AGM of the council in on the 15th of May and everybody then will know where they're going.